All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We still have people jumping on, but they won't miss much. I'm just going to give a very short intro. Welcome to the Planning Board Track. Let me just forward this here. My name's Heather Shank. I am the new director at Office of Planning and Development. There are three tracks for this conference. This you are in the Planning Board Track. There's also a zoning board track and a historic preservation and housing track. You can switch tracks. You just need to leave this meeting. You all should have been sent email links to the other tracks. So you can just click on one of those links and you'll be able to enter one of the other conferences. All sessions will be recorded. We are recording now and they will be available online afterwards on our, on the OPD website. So this conference has been a pretty great success in terms of registrants so far. We've had, I don't know what the final tally up was, but I know that it was over 500. We got registrants from over 166 municipalities, which is representing about over 70% of the state of New Hampshire municipalities in the state. So I think this, we think this was, might have been a record for us in terms of how much of the state that we reached. You can see the map there. Hopefully it's not too small for you. But the darker green are, is a, you know, the higher, you know, seven to 10 registrants and moving down as it goes lighter. So we're happy you're all here to join us and we hope that you find this exceptionally useful and can share that, this information or share the word with your colleagues. So the Office of Planning and Development is going to give a brief overview of what we do here. This training and providing information to municipalities is a big part of the function and services that we provide. This is our municipal and regional assistance program. We, we assist really anybody who wants to call us up with, with questions about regulations or land use. We can refer you to your regulations and help you to understand your regulations. We helped to understand the RSA statutes. We also collect land use information about all the municipalities in the state, their regulations and their ordinances and their updates. So we're kind of a warehouse for in terms of regulatory data. We also are the state data center. So we partner with the US Census and we put out surveys and different information and we house some of that information here. We have a GIS program where we partner with UNH, the Granite Program there. We help them to create data and we cooperate with them on data projects. And as well as the St. Anselm College Zoning Atlas Project, which has been ongoing. We also participate, we are FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program Administrator. So we, we help FEMA to administer their National Flood Insurance Program and that is again another role where we reach out to municipalities to assist them with interpreting FEMA regulations, updating their regulations, making sure that they comply, which allows them to qualify for flood insurance. We have nearly a nine, I think over 97% participation across the state in the National Flood Insurance Program. That's just a brief overview. We also have tons of resources on our website. Additional resources that we have on the planning assistance website as a monthly webinar series. So Stephanie Verdial, who is on here as a presenter, she'll, I'll let her introduce herself, but she has done these monthly webinar series. I think Noah and Ken have done a few as well every month for, for quite a while now. So if you visit our website, there are, there's all kinds of webinars on there. This is just an example of three that, that are there. Welcome to the board. Everything from working through subdivision and site plan approvals to attracting developers and much, much more information. These are one hour webinars. So if you're looking for additional training, you can, you can go there and there's a lot of great information. We also literally have training, tests that you can take and certificates if you, if you sign up for that, that you can earn. We have planning and zoning handbooks that we put out, which are guides to the state statutes in the site plan and subdivision regulation process. We update those pretty regularly and those are also very valuable resources for understanding how to implement your regulations or how to create your regulations. Again, as I mentioned, there are other publications. We have a lot on there that has been produced by OPD staff, but we also have links to lots of other organizations like New Hampshire Housing and other in NHMA. So you can access some of their resources through our website as well. And then we have a resource page that best practices lots of information by subject area. So if you're looking for transportation or infrastructure or, you know, housing, of course, is a really big one. So there's a lot of information on our website and we're constantly trying to kind of update that and make it as accessible as possible. So how to participate today? I'm assuming most of you know how to use the Zoom format platform. You are muted and your mic is off for the duration, but if you want to participate, you can put questions over in the chat. So as you'll notice, there's a little chat icon at the top. If you click that, it will open the chat box on your screen and then you can type a question in. We're going to attempt to try to keep the questions to the end of each session, but if there's one that seems fairly straightforward to answer, you know, I'll jump in and try to answer best I can, or perhaps Stephanie or somebody else. But we will try to get to all the questions by the end of the session, though we may not jump into the middle of, of the presentations for that. So here is the agenda for the day. We're starting out with Steve Buckley. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. I thought we were starting, I, in my mind that Ben was starting. But you, you are starting in a few minutes and then we'll have a 15 minute break. We'll have lunch at 11:45. That will be an hour. And then we'll have Stephanie's session, another break. And then we'll have kind of a round table session with Steve Buckley, Ben Frost and Stephanie Verdial at the end, where I'll ask some questions. You can ask questions. It's kind of an open forum for you to, if, if you have something that hasn't been addressed yet. And with that, I believe I will turn it over. Steve, you are on. See if your audio is good now still. Oh, you took control. Okay, good.
Good morning, everyone. And thank you for the OPD for inviting me to make this presentation on planning board basics. Some of you have may have seen this presentation before, but it's my effort to give you the basic elements of the statutes and the common law that governs the activities of the planning board and the very large amount of responsibility that the communities that you live in rely on the duties of the planning board to carry out the very important land use function in our local governments. So what my plan is today is to cover some general topics first to talk about the duty to assist, the common law duty to assist citizenry to understand how they interact with your land use system in your, in your town. Talk a little bit about conflicts of interest. And then I'm going to review what I think to be the most important statute to reduce the planning board subdivision site plan, master planning, workforce housing, CIP, zoning amendments, et cetera. And then get into some of the, the actual procedures you would follow for the handling applications, the timeline for review, using consultants, developments of regional impact and also address some of the more common recent issues you have to be concerned with in terms of how changes have been enacted by the legislature that narrow the timeframes you have and the manner in which you make decisions with regards to subdivisions and site plans. So let me start what I think to be a very important concept, which is embedded both in our Hampshire constitution and also in decisions by our New Hampshire Supreme Court, that planning boards, governments generally have a duty, have an obligation to work cooperatively with the citizenry to understand how they obtain permissions necessary to carry out reasonable uses of their property, whether it's commercial, industrial or residential. So the, the idea here, and it's a concept that is again embedded in our constitution is there's, is this duty to provide assistance, provide guidance and to allow people to reasonably make use of their land consistent with your local regulations. And it's important to understand, and this is indicative of some recent decisions by our New Hampshire Supreme Court, certainly a decision involving the town of Hanover and Dartmouth College, that the subdivision of site plan process is not intended to be completely adversarial. It's supposed to be a cooperative enterprise between the land use board and the applicant and to make sure, you know, reasonably there is compliance both with the zoning ordinance, subdivision and site plan regulations. So projects can move forward to approval. And there is some duty to advise applicants on how they accomplish their land use ends. Doesn't mean that you have to be an advisor to the applicant, but you reasonably have to have either documentation at town hall that explains application procedures and, and maybe provide some overview of your subdivision of site plan regulations, or perhaps even just making sure you have a staff person whom is knowledgeable at town hall, who can answer questions for applicants so someone can move forward with the process of getting the approvals they may need for particular uses of land they wish to undertake. It's from our perspective, a common question that comes up for land use board members is what is their duty to avoid conflicts of interest? And this is the key statute RSA 673:14. It is the statute that regulates the behavior to avoid conflicts of interest by all land use boards. And, and there's two key phrases in this statute. First of all, as a land use board member, you can't participate in a decision where you're acting in judicial capacity if you have a personal or pecuniary interest. And it's important to understand what this concept judicial capacity means. That means, and that's typically the case, certainly with zoning boards of adjustments and planning boards, a planning board is being asked to make a decision based upon someone's application. And you receive facts from the applicant, but you also receive facts and points of view from members of the community and abutters. So to some degree, you're weighing evidence from both sides of competing points of view, whether this is an appropriate land use application and whether or not the abutters concerns are being addressed. And it's much like what a judge does in weighing evidence. And then as a judge in your particular situation as, as a planning board member, you then have to weigh the evidence you receive against the regulations you have, whether it's the zoning ordinance or the subdivision of site plan regulations and make reasoned decisions. So when you act in that capacity, you have to avoid personal and pecuniary interests. And that's pretty easy to understand. If you're in a butter to a project, you have a direct personal and pecuniary interest and you have to avoid that particular application. You have to recuse yourself. A personal interest could also include if someone who is an applicant before your land use board is someone you're related to by blood or marriage, where you would have a personal relationship with that person and naturally would be more inclined perhaps to grant them approval, even though you may not like your brother-in-law. If your brother-in-law is an applicant, you probably most definitely have to recuse yourself. But then you also have another set of standards to take into account. It's not just personal pecuniary interest. You're required to recuse yourself if you would be needing to recuse yourself as if you were sitting as a juror using the juror disqualification statute. So that statute, although not in the zoning and planning statutes, is available. And these are the standards, if you've ever been asked to sit on a jury in the Superior Court. These are the things the Superior Court judge would have asked you to see if you are not an appropriate person to sit on that particular case. So do you expect to gain or lose? Are you related to any party? Have you advised or assisted other, a party, any party in the case? Have you directly or indirectly given your opinion, prejudged the case? Are you employed or employ any of the parties in the case? Are you prejudiced to any degree about the application? Do you employ any of the attorneys that are handling, if there are ones representing an applicant or an abutter in the case? So if these things are answered, yes, you know, it's, this is the kind of situation where it's appropriate for you to consider recusing yourself to avoid a conflict which could result in a decision that you participate in being thrown out on appeal to the Superior Court. The Z1 Express case is very useful guidance and understanding. One of the ways you really need to avoid conflicts of interest. And I think the synopsis of the case for everyone's benefit is this is a situation where a controversial conditional use permit to construct a new, a, a new garage, a gas station, a particular area, which was arguably going to have a big impact on a residential neighborhood. Whether or not it was appropriate for members of the deciding body, in this case, the planning board and the particular person in question was a, a alderman sitting on the planning board in an ex officio capacity, expressing opinions, supporting the abutters before a final decision was made. And that's the very kind of expression of prejudgment, which our Supreme Court has made very clear. A judicial officer cannot express an opinion at the, at any time before they finally vote. The voting is when the, the member expresses an opinion, but it should not be on social media. It should be not prejudging cases before all the evidence is heard. So unfortunately, what happened in this case is that's exactly what happened. A member of the planning board expressed an opinion, supporting the abutters on a social media site established by the butters and it resulted in the case, well, ultimately the, the planning board said no to the application. The applicant appealed. Superior Court judge said, hey, the, the member of the planning board had a duty to participate in deliberations with an open mind and failed to do so constituted a threatening of the integrity of the deliberative process. So words of the wise, probably more important than anything else, stay off of social media when you are aware there's a social media site, even your own, that has the potential for posting of messages, both yours or others, which may reflect, unfortunately, whether or not you've prejudged a case. So what do you do with conflicts of interest? If any of these things arise, a couple of things to keep in mind. You can ask your fellow board members, do I have a conflict? And ask them to vote as to whether or not you have a conflict. No one other than the board members themselves or the member who might have the conflict can ask for an advisory vote. The members of the public can't do that. The applicants can't do that. If you're going to, if you see a strong statement from your fellow board members, you should recuse yourself. Probably a good idea that you should, you want to recuse and you don't abstain because abstaining is staying on the board. You want to recuse. I do encourage you to avoid expressing opinions on social media. And it's the better course of action to disclose, if necessary, remove yourself and don't participate in that particular case. And generally, it's better to err on the side of caution.
So Steve, can I jump in and kind of catch up with the chat for a few quick questions here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Going back, Eric asked, um, does RSA 67314 cover conservation commissions? Or are they covered elsewhere?
Technically not. Conservation commissions are not considered land use boards and 67314 only applies to land use boards. The conservation commission is not a land use board. So technically that's just the case. That statute doesn't apply to the conservation commission, but it certainly would be something for a conservation commission member to take into account, but it would not necessarily be binding. Because ultimately conservation commissions in their decision-making generally are not making the kind of definitive rulings on land use as land use boards do.
Okay, thank you. If I build tiny homes and am looking to add detached ADUs to our zoning, would this be a direct or pecuniary interest?
Let me just say this. I think what the gentleman is asking is can I have a point of view from a legislative point of view? So there's a distinction between having a, a decision, a, a judgment which has a legislative point of view versus a judicial point of view. So it is not uncommon for zoning board of adjustment members and planning board members to have their own personal opinions about the, the nature and direction of the local zoning ordinance. For instance, I have a personal opinion about my zoning ordinance. I'm on the zoning board of adjustment in my town. I'm a little bit concerned that we're making it too difficult to build homes because we require everyone to have two buildable acres. It's tough to get two buildable acres in my town. And so I can certainly express an opinion about that. I could go to the planning board and recommend they amend the zoning ordinance because that's an expression of a legislative opinion. But when you're dealing with an actual application, whether or not someone satisfied the regulations or should be granted a variance, that's different. Then you're acting in judicial capacity and you have to avoid a conflict. But when you're acting in a legislative capacity, either as a citizen concerning proposed zoning amendments or how you wish your particular town would proceed and, and through the planning board to suggest zoning amendments, that's different. I'm allowed to have a legislative point of view.
Great, thank you. And maybe just for clarification, this seems to be on the same point. What about at a public hearing where a member says they do not support the action the planning board is presenting?
Well, I, I think just in terms of general process. And this is consistent with, and anyone who's read them is Riggins Rules. If you want to get a good snapshot of the things that are good to do and of things to bad to do, if you're a member of a planning board, Riggins Rules, R-I-G-G-I-N-S are really good guidance. One of the things that board members should not do is prematurely express their opinion on an application. Because what you're doing, if you have an application come in and someone makes a presentation and maybe you haven't heard all the evidence, what you're saying to everyone else who hasn't spoken, I don't care what you're going to say. I've already decided this is a bad application. I'm not going to approve this subdivision or site plan. That's bad land use board behavior. You should wait until you hear all the evidence, all the issues, all the public hearing comments. Once you've then had all that corpus of information in front of you and the case is brought back to the planning board, that's the time to express your opinion, to support or oppose granting it. I just think it's inappropriate to just announce at the beginning of an application, I oppose this application because you're discounting all the other persons who would eventually be presenting before your board. And that's just a bad way to approach being a member of a land use board. You have to approach cases with an open mind.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So planning board statutory duties, there's a lot to cover if you're a member of planning board. Planning boards, one of the more important roles the planning board has is to adopt and update the master plan, which should be done, you know, regularly. If your master plan is more than 10 years old, it's probably something to think about updating your master plan. Planning board also can be authorized to propose a capital improvement plan. We'll talk about what a capital improvement plan is. It's an advisory document. But town meetings can also decide instead of having the planning board do the CIP, have a capital improvement planning committee. The planning board, very important role, recommends the initial zoning ordinance and any amendments there too. Planning board can be authorized to adopt subdivision regulations and approve subdivisions and site plans. Planning boards can also be the excavation regulator and presumptively, but usually this is done by the select board and the road agent, the planning board regulates driveways. On the subdivision of site plan approval process, I know that you're getting, get a lot of presentations today from Ben Frost and Stephanie Verdial. I'd just say a few things about subdivision of site plan approval. I, I strongly recommend that towns adopt a definitive warrant article that allows the planning board to require preliminary review of subdivisions. I think if you do that, you're going to give yourself more time to carefully consider an application. But the, the job here in the subdivision is approve a plat to divide up land. You also typically are also approving if there's going to be a new road, the construction of new roads and any other necessary utility facilities. On site, on the site plan side, in order to have the authority to approve site plans, you have to have a zoning ordinance. And the planning board had to have adopted subdivision regulations. So once that's the case, then the planning board may approve site plans for development or change of use on non-residential areas or uses or multifamily dwellings or structures involving more than two dwelling units. The workforce housing statute, I think, kind of fits in here because I think it's something you need to be aware of. Because it touches on the planning board's duty to ensure your zoning ordinance complies with the workforce housing statute, which says workforce housing is to be allowed in a majority of the land areas in your community zone residential. And because the statute is a bit complex in how you define what is workforce housing, it's defined by certain calculations on what is considered affordable to a, how, to a, to a family or individuals who have the median income for the area in which your town is located. The Hampshire Housing has a number of tables that are available on its website to define what's considered affordable in your community. But you do have this obligation to ensure, which for zoning, you're probably only going to have a lot of control over the dimensional requirements of your ordinance. So keeping, keeping that in mind, I think just be aware, there is this duty to ensure that housing for sale or, or rental housing meets these affordability criteria so that you can show you're complying with the workforce housing statute. And there are other elements of the workforce housing statute that deal with how the, a land use board would handle an application where someone presents to the planning board, this is a workforce housing project. And it's really designed to provide kind of a menu of procedures that are intended to allow the developer of the workforce housing to, to argue that certain conditions imposed by the planning board are too onerous. It's going to make it difficult to make the housing affordable, given what the planning board has done. And so the planning board is supposed to enter into kind of a dialogue with the developer and, and eventually come up with some changes to the subdivision approval, which minimizes the impact of cost of construction. Such as, you know, are you going to require Cape Cod granite burbing? Or are you going to require, you know, different types of, of curbing, which is less expensive? So it is just an important statute to be aware of. I think also, most particularly with regards to the planning board's procedures for subdivisions that are argued or site plans that are workforce as presented by the developer and/or in your zoning amendments. I've mentioned capital improvement. I just want to mention again, you know, if the planning board is engaged in this business of making these recommendations, a capital improvement plan is really designed to project into the future. What are the types of improvements to our capital infrastructure, which are reasonably going to be necessary? Roads, buildings, bridges, all those things that make a community function that are necessary for the community to be able to receive services that are necessary for either residential, commercial or industrial uses. But it's only advisory documents. But the, the planning board's job is to look forward in the future. Where are we going to need to have improvements to our roads, to our bridges, to replacing of plow trucks or police vehicles, whatever the case may be, and plan over time how those acquisitions will be accomplished, ideally partnered with a, a a system of saving for those capital improvements through capital reserve funds. And these recommendations are put together by the planning board, looking out five, 10, 20 years and presented ideally on an annual basis to the budgetary authority in your community, which is first and foremost the select board or the, or the, the city council. And/or if you have one, a budget committee that may present the proposed budget to the town meeting or to the legislative body. But it's only advisory. You, you can't make these budgetary authorities agree to put a certain amount of money in capital reserve. It's an advisory document, but it's an important way that you would be able to show that we're deliberately planning. And it is in fact a prerequisite if you want to have an impact fee or certainly it's less likely today or growth management. These are, CIP is a prerequisite to having those types of regulatory authorities under the zoning and planning statutes. I just want to say a few words about zoning amendments. You know, the planning board plays a critical role in the process by which the zoning ordinance is amended and updated. And there are actually two agencies in your town, it's, and it could be three, depending on a village district, that have the power to propose zoning amendments. The select board can propose zoning amendments, but the principal zoning amendments are proposed by the planning board. And so the planning board has that unique authority, which they should probably gather information from their fellow land use board members, certainly in the zoning board of adjustment, maybe the conservation commission, although not a land use board, would have important information for the planning board to understand where are the things that we need to tweak or modify the zoning ordinance. So the zoning amendment process mandates at a minimum, one public hearing for the planning board before the proposals can be put forward to voting at town meeting. This is done on the official balloting process. So it's done in the polling station. For those towns, for those of you in town council towns, your town council may have the authority to do zoning amendments or may go to a, a town meeting type of vote. And if you're in a city, that is the city council that adopts as the legislative body of the zoning amendments. One important aspect of the zoning amendment process, if someone is not in agreement with the zoning amendment, what they can do is file a protest petition. And that protest petition, if complying with the, with the number of necessary affected parties who sign on to the petition, as defined by statute, could then require any zoning amendment to be adopted by a super majority, two thirds. So it raises the bar in terms of how much voting has to be in favor of that particular zoning. So, it raises the bar in terms of how much voting has to be in favor of that particular zoning amendment. That's an important thing to keep in mind in terms of process. The other one is, the planning board has the authority to state on either a protest or a zoning amendment submitted by petition, that's another way in which a zoning amendment can come to the town meeting, other than the select board and the planning board, it can be submitted by petition. Any zoning amendment submitted by the select board or by petition has to receive a recommendation by the planning board, do you approve or disapprove that zoning amendment? And that actually has to appear on the ballot. So, these are important elements of how the planning board both proposes and responds to zoning amendments that are being proposed in your community. Innovative land use controls is another process by which zoning could in part, and this will be a zoning amendment that obviously adopted by the planning board, recommended by the planning board, and then adopted by the town meeting. Innovative land use controls would allow for other agencies, typically the planning board, to grant zoning-type permissions. Typically, what you would see is a planning board would be conferred conditional use approval authority for certain types of uses. The one that I was most commonly involved with was a number of years ago, when cell tower construction was a bit more common. There was a concern in the community I represented that there really needed to be a bringing together of the approval process for cell towers. And so, rather than having the ZBA grant a special exception for the proposed location of the cell tower, and then the planning board approve a site plan, the town I represented put together a conditional use permit, a zoning ordinance, that conferred on the planning board a one-stop shop for all of the decisions that had to be made for a particular cell tower. So, that's kind of what I've considered to be a very useful mechanism for kind of allowing a combination of the planning board's authority to deal with the site plan approval and also giving a zoning approval. And so, if in your community, there's thought to be a need to have a combined ability for certain uses to get permission from one land use board, certainly you might want to consider using the innovative land use controls methodology. And certainly, the innovative land use control statute, it covers a lot of other topics. Those are just some of the ways in which you might enable a different approach to land use approvals, rather than always getting land use approvals in terms of zoning permissions from the zoning board, this could be delegated to the planning board in some instance, to the planning board. You know, one of the things I would say is also to keep in mind, the conditional use zoning amendment might confer administration to other agencies, it could be the select board. But even if you had the select board issue a conditional use permit, the planning board was thought to be consulted, and this is described in the statute. The planning board has a very significant role to play with regards to the deployment of new streets and certainly utilities that might be located in those streets. And I would just say that, you know, you really have to look upon the authority of the planning board to approve new subdivision streets as a cooperative relationship between the other more important highway agency in your community, the select board. So, the select board has plenary jurisdiction over your town highways. But the planning board has jurisdiction over approving divisions of land and even sometimes site plans, where new public streets are going to be constructed. And so, harmonizing that relationship is important. So, for instance, when the planning board is being asked to approve a subdivision, and I've seen this a number of times in the past, and let's say the applicant wishes to widen the adjacent public street. That widening of an existing public street and the permission to do so, that has to go to the select board, the select board has to approve that. And so, there could be a need as part of a subdivision approval to say, this conditional approval, subject to the select board's approving your proposed change in the right-of-way for the adjacent public street. But the public road that's going to be built for that new subdivision, that's within the planning board's authority. And as part of that authority, and this should be consistent with the town's method of describing how roads should be built, the planning board has to have road construction standards. What are the standards that apply to building a new subdivision road? What's the width of the road, the subbase? And what is the amount of material that has to support the road? The Department of Transportation actually has a geometric design standard for suburban roads and subdivision roads that's available at the Hampshire Department of Transportation website. It's a really good guide to the degree to which a road has to be constructed in terms of additional bituminous concrete, subbase, gravel, et cetera, based upon the number of trips on that particular road. And so, traffic engineering would be an important part of the input the planning board should have in developing your road construction standards. Ideally, those road construction standards should be consistent with the town's road construction standards. The other part of this process, and this is a new development in the process of approving subdivisions. When you approve a subdivision, there's two things that you really should think about. If there's going to be a new public road that eventually is going to come out of this approval, let's say it's a 10-lot subdivision with maybe 500 feet of new proposed town road, you need to think about how much of the completeness of that road has to be affirmatively demonstrated by inspection before you will allow the building of homes or the issue of certificates of occupancy. So, you can establish the minimum amount of completion of an adjacent public road before occupancy. But then you also have the duty to impose performance bonding. But be aware that there were significant changes to the performance bonding process adopted by the legislature last year. The key thing to keep in mind is, the statute was amended, you still should ensure the town stands, is provided some kind of performance bond security that the road is going to be built and the cost of building that road, which I think is probably in the neighborhood of $200 or $300 a linear foot these days, is actually secured to the towns by a letter of credit, performance bond, et cetera. But you now can no longer require performance bonding when the road construction commences. You can only require performance bonding once there is a proposal to sell subdivided lots or to get building permits. So, the developer is free to commence road construction under the amendments to the statute any time, so long as he does not try to, or she does not try to sell the lots or does not get building permits. So, that's a significant change in, you know, when you can require subdivisions to put up performance bonds. Typically, in the past, I would have told my clients, don't record the plan until you have the performance bond as a condition precedent to approval. You really can't do that anymore. You have to allow the plan to get recorded, and then you only get a performance bond in place once the person wants to convey lots or get a building permit.
Steve, there were a couple of interesting related questions that maybe we could get to. One person says, what if the developer wants to create landlocked lots with easements over another lot to provide access to a, quote, "private" street? How does 67441 apply?
Okay, well, I would just say the Supreme Court has made very clear that planning board cannot approve divisions of land unless there's full compliance with RSA 67441. So, the planning board could not permit a landlocked parcel to have easement access only to a private road, unless that was previously approved by the select board under 67441. And there was a recorded instrument at the registry of deeds allowing to limit the municipal liability for having that kind of access configuration. I would just say, in my humble opinion, it is a very, very bad idea to allow new homes to be built accessible only by an easement to a private road. There's a number of things wrong with that, it's consistent with the statute, it's inconsistent with the planning board's obligation. And allowing people to build on private roads inevitably, in the future, those people are going to want to have the same services as everyone else who's on Class 5 roads, and they're going to petition to lay out those roads in the future. And then someone's going to have to pay the piper, who's going to pay for the cost of bringing those roads up to Class 5 standards? So, I just humbly think that's just a terribly bad idea to approve subdivisions of land. But the statute is pretty clear, in my opinion, and the Supreme Court has made this clear, under 67441, you cannot approve a subdivision on a Class 6 or private road unless there's been full compliance with that statute. And that would have required select board approval to allow building permits to be issued on that subdivided parcel on a Class 6 or private road and recording of the limitation of municipal liability in conformance with the statute.
Great.
Was there another one, Heather?
Yeah, there's one more that's pretty interesting. Can the planning board not approve a new public road in a subdivision if the cost of maintaining the road is higher than the taxable income from the number of lots created?
Well, I guess that's a policy question that is vested in the planning board. I would tell you that, you know, in that particular instance, you are creating a situation, you know, I guess I would be worried that communities are using the future maintenance of a road as perhaps an inconsistent decision-making tool to all drive residential development onto private roads. I just don't believe that that's ultimately appropriate. You know, I suppose if the planning board has a legitimate pro forma representation that the maintenance of this Class 6 road, Class 5 road in the future would not be supported adequately by the income from the new homes on that subdivision, I suppose you could make those judgments. But if that's going to be the calculation that's employed by the planning board, everyone in town who's on a Class 5 road, you're going to have two layers of residential uses. Everybody on private roads, but they have to pay for their own private road maintenance, and everyone else on existing Class 5 roads with the town pays for it. And that's going to create significant differences of opinion amongst the citizens in that community. So, I don't think that that would ultimately be the appropriate approach for deciding whether to approve a subdivision with a new subdivision road.
Thank you.
So, the driveway statute is an important one to keep in mind. The planning board has the power, just as does the Department of Transportation, has the authority to approve new driveways to town roads. And by the way, when we talk about town roads, it's Class 5, Class 4, and Class 6 highways. So, the planning board has this authority. I think typically the arrangement in most communities is that the planning board adopts driveway regulations and then confers administration of the driveway permitting process to the select board and/or the road agent. But it's important to know generally that the authority to, you know, connect my property with a connection point to the adjacent public road requires a driveway permit. And so, the driveway permitting process is designed to ensure that when someone builds a connection to a public road, they do it in a way that's consistent with the need to protect the road from siltation, drainage problems, and other adverse consequences that can occur if the driveway connection is not built appropriately. And the town, through driveway regulation, has continuing authority over anyone's driveway, even if the driveway was not subject of a driveway permit issued by the community in the past. So, you know, just recognize driveways can have a unique potential impact on the adjacent roadbed and the driveway process designed to protect the roadbed and the town's infrastructure costs for maintaining and building that public road. Planning board has the power under 67439A to permit, without a plat being recorded, the merger of contiguous pre-existing approved or subdivided lots. And I think I've emphasized the word contiguous, because I've received a number of questions recently, well, could we merge lots on both sides of a public road? And my answer is no. The word contiguous means the two parcels have to abut each other. So, if I own two parcels of land, which abut each other on the same side of the road, and I wish to just merge those without going through the subdivision approval process, I can do that with a simple request to the planning board. Many planning boards, especially in the larger communities, have developed a process where this can be done administratively at the staff level, and it's simply a form that gets recorded at the registry, that, you know, these two parcels, Blackacre and Whiteacre, are going to be merged and considered one unified lot going forward. I would just be aware, there is this requirement that the merger process has to take into account that if one of the lots is subject to a mortgage or a lien, you need to get the consent of the lien holder to allow both lots to be merged. Now, most lien holders would be happy to have more security, because now you're adding more land to the land that was subject to the mortgage. But you do have this obligation to ensure the mortgage lien holder has consented and that this is recorded along with the approval to comply with the provisions of the statute. Planning boards, and this was something actually I worked on with Ben Frost a number of years ago, have the authority to impose off-site exactions. So, just a quick background in terms of history, there was a number of cases that arose under the authority of planning boards to impose impact fees. The impact fee statute actually is part of the innovative land use control statute. And the issue came up is whether or not planning boards could impose off-site exactions if they didn't have an impact fee ordinance. And ultimately, the Supreme Court said, no, you can't do that, you have to have an impact fee ordinance. So, I remember working with Ben on trying to get an amendment to the statute to return to the planning board the power to, even if you don't have an impact fee ordinance, to say, well, this particular project, let's say it's a mini mall that's being built on an existing town road, is going to have unique impact on that existing town road. We're going to need something like an XL or a Dcel, you know, turnoff so that people can pull out of the stream of traffic and not impede traffic, or other improvements directly within the town's right-of-way. That's called an off-site improvement, an improvement off the site of the project under consideration. This statute, as amended, returned to the planning board, something that planning boards had used for many years, to require off-site improvements. But the statute has, you know, very clear limitations, you know. The improvements have to be necessitated by the developments located outside the property boundaries. It's subject to the rational nexus test, and I know that Ben's going to talk about the sheets in El Dorado County case, you know, that impact fees or off-site assessments have to be reasonable and the need for it has to be brought about because of the unique impact a particular project has on municipal infrastructure, typically roads, or it could be drainage systems. But the power to, as part of the approval, to impose an off-site exaction is limited to highway drainage and sewer and water upgrades. You can't ask for the developer to pay for a new fire truck under the off-site exaction statute. It's for this limited purpose, drainage, sewer, and water, sewer and water upgrades, and highway, excuse me. Again, I want to emphasize here this concept of planning boards using the preliminary review of conceptual consultation to design review procedures. The first one I've said before, requiring and mandating preliminary review of all subdivisions and site plans is something you can require, but you need the town meeting to vote under both RSA 674:35 and 674:43. 43, section 43, is the site plan regulations, section 35 is subdivision. The town meeting has to vote to approve, to see if the town will require preliminary review of subdivisions and site plans. Once you have that authority, especially for small communities where you don't have a planning staff that can help you navigate whether an application is complete and whether that person has met the checklist process, you can use the preliminary consultation process to have the applicant come in. You don't have to notify butters of a preliminary consultation. You can just simply have a meeting with the applicant, you can make clear to the applicant, which is a good idea. Whatever we say today is not binding on us. What you say to us is not binding on you. But let's have a discussion of your proposal and you could use that as a methodology of uh, accomplishing a checklist review of a project. To determine whether it's a good idea to schedule a completed application um, meeting. Uh, you can do that through, through preliminary of review, preliminary conceptual consultation. Uh, so I think it's a good process to consider. Design review is a more sophisticated form of the preliminary review. Uh, but this design review does require notification of a butters. So you've got to the formal application process. So how do you move forward to get the project before the board for? A public hearing and making a decision. Well, you have to have a completed application. Your regulations have to specify what's considered a completed application. And that checklist, which again, if you're a small community, you know, have planning staff using conceptual consultation, go through the checklist. To decide whether the application could be considered completed at a public meeting uh, is a good way to proceed. Um, you want to also discuss, you know, at, at or about the time you're considering application uh, submission. Uh, and uh, consideration whether it's complete is whether or not there's going to be fees and escrow costs. Uh, the, the set aside for future review of the application by your consulting engineer or other experts you may need. Um, and then the application has to be accepted at a public meeting of the planning board with. A butter and published notice. Now, it's interesting about the statute, six seventy four forty one, six seventy six colon, uh, colon four. Refers to the fact that planning board has to give notice to the public and a butters. And then it says the language is and. By newspaper as required by the subdivision regulations. And most of you do require in your subdivision or site plan regulations, notice by newspaper. But understand the statute doesn't require that. That's something many boards insert into their regulations. So your timeline for decision, keep this in mind, I can't emphasize it enough, under preliminary conceptual consultation. There is no timeline. And, and you know, planning boards are being hemmed in more and more with more limited time periods to make decisions. And I'll get to this in a second, but you can't ask for a ninety day extension anymore. You're stuck with sixty five days. And if you don't decide that plan within sixty five days, then the applicant does not give you an extension. You only have two choices. You either approve it or you disapprove it. You can, well, you can say no. Like, let's say you can say no. Um, but uh, if you thought you had more, needed more time. What you could do is to deny the application without prejudice. Um, which to allow the person to come back without having to worry about, you know, whether there's a previous uh, approval. Uh, and um, whether that approval uh, prevents someone from uh, the denial prevents something reapplying. So I guess the, the point here is, um, you know, preliminary conceptual consultation. Uh, is a way to avoid these time limits, at least for having a, a rational discussion with the applicant. And, and not being hemmed in by the sixty five days uh, and uh, not being able to ask for an extension. Um, so if the application has to be submitted with twenty one days for, for the acceptance meeting. You have to give notice to the butters in public in ten days. And again, the notice to the, a newspaper notice is something you can prescribe by your subdivision regulations. You have to hold at least one public hearing and make a decision within sixty five days. And then you have to issue a written decision within five business days of the meeting where you decide approval or disapproval. Um, the planning board does have some ability to employ alternative site review approval procedures. And again, this may typically more be more common in larger communities um, that the planning board. The approval of town meeting can delegate minor site plan approvals. Uh, to technically qualified administrators, but that still allows a person to appeal to the planning board. Um, many towns, again, larger communities might have a technical review group. Um, where instead of the applicant first going to the planning board, they go to a technical review group. Which is typically made up of department heads, police, fire, sewer, water, building, land use. Those um, departments all sent uh, representatives to a monthly meeting. Where rep- applicants can come to that monthly meeting and get feedback on their application. What are the issues they're going to face? What is each of those departments are concerned with this particular application? And then that applicant would be better informed when they submit their application to the uh, to the planning board. The town meeting or the planning board can also establish thresholds below which. Site, further site plan approval is not necessary. And this is actually a pretty good tool. You know, if you have a strip mall that has a certain number, let's say. Four you, fit up units for commercial uses. You know, what if the, the owner of the strip mall wants to add some more parking? And it's not a, a significant amount of, of a, a, a impervious surface being added. Or modify some of the landscaping, not inconsistent significantly with the original approval. Or maybe add up to five hundred, maybe in a thousand more feet of, a square feet of, of usable. Uh, commercial unit area. You know, these could be deemed in your opinion as a planning board de minimis changes to do not require the developer to come back to. Uh, the owner of the project to the planning board for further site plan approval. So it is, I think, a useful tool to minimize, you know, the demands placed on business owners to go through the. The site planner approval process, which can be time consuming and certainly could be expensive. So it's something to think of as a way to um, limit the amount of additional applications for pre-existing or previously approved site plans. Um, it's important to understand at the time you accept a completed application and actually, uh, this is the way the statute works. Um, if you've given notice of a proposed meeting to accept a plan as complete. So there's public notice out there uh, and notice to the butters. Once that happens. Any subsequently proposed zoning amendment, subdivision regulation. Or site plan regulation will not apply to that project. And it's meant to say basically, on the moment we give notice of a proposed acceptance of a subdivision or project. The rules of the game that will apply to that project are fixed as of the date of that notice. And if the town later proposes amendments to zoning subdivision or site plan, those amendments will not affect that application. Because it's intended to ensure the rules of the game stay fixed. For that project going forward as it moves through the approval process. Development's regional impact is probably a, a pretty important um, point of decision making to be uh, undertaken by the planning board. When a project is coming before you and I, it's, it can be tricky to decide, you know, what, when you should make a judgment of regional impact. But keep in mind that, that the idea behind the statute is to recognize. That certain projects could reasonably expected to have an impact on a neighboring community. Not just every project, but one that's certainly near the boundaries of a nearby community. And so that's a, an object, a, a, a decision the planning board should really take into account. When you know your project, a, not your project, but an applicant's project could have that, you know, impact on an adjacent community. Keep that in mind, take that into account and uh, consistent with the statute, when you make that judgment. Then you're going to have to give notice to the regional planning commission and the community. So that they can reasonably participate in the process. And, and before you hold the next public hearing on the project, you have to give that notice uh, within fourteen days. And actually, there are cases from the Superior Court that have held failure to reasonably approve a judgment. A project will have regional impact could result in the case being thrown back to the planning board and overturned. Because the planning board did not uh, appropriately give notice to the uh, regional planning commission and, and declare it to be a project of regional impact. Um, I, 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 I think one of the trickier parts to decide when do we make a judgment as to regional impact? And I've re- received a number of questions about this and my conceptualization is this. I don't think it's appropriate for the planning board to make uh, a substantive decision about an application. Until you're at the plan acceptance point of view. Uh, that is, you've, you've teed up an application for plan acceptance. Um, and it typically what most planning boards do is they schedule the application for plan acceptance. And then the notice also says, if the plan is accepted, we're going to go straight into the first public hearing. I think the approach that I think makes sense is you do that. You schedule it for plan acceptance, you might go into public hearing. But then at the time the board says this is an application is complete. I think it's then appropriate for a member of the planning board or the staff to say. We need to make a decision of whether this project is one of regional impact under the regional impact statute. Uh, and I think that's when you make that decision. If you make the decision, it's a project of regional impact. I think you're then going to have to stop, not hold, not go into the first public hearing and comply with the fourteen day notice requirement. Now, the beauty of doing that, the beauty, I should say, in terms of the eye of the beholder. Uh, there is another statute that says if you make a decla- declaration of regional impact. The planning board automatically gets another thirty days to consider the application. So instead of having only sixty five days, uh, you now have uh, uh, ninety five days. Uh, so you, 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 you take that into account. I mean, that's, that's something that will allow you to have more flexibility uh, to uh, consider the application. Because you're going to get that, that additional thirty days under the statute. Um, and, and then of course you have to give notice under the fourteen days. So you would stop, not hold the public hearing, give the notice and then continue on with the process. And you actually have given yourself more time. Now, I'm not recommending you just find every project ones of regional impact. This is only when it legitimately arises to a conclusion. This project given its location and its uh, its type of impacts on the community. Our community and local and nearby community is one of potential regional impact.
Steve, we had a, a, a good question earlier, if you, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, what do you do when your neighbor, your neighboring community? Has a development that, that you feel that your municipality feels is a development of regional impact, but they have not determined it so? And ha- it, I answered it as you could reach out to them and say, hey, we think this is a D R I. We think you should make that determination and it affects us. Um, but if you, if they don't do that or they decide not to, who can actually, what's the recourse there for that, for that community?
Well, the resource ultimately, and this, there's some Superior Court decisions to support this conclusion. Failure to make a, a reasoned judgment that a project is of regional impact can result in the case being. Basically thrown out by a Superior Court judge and, and telling the planning board to start over again. Um, so I think it may require a little bit of persuasive approach to the reluctant. Town that is unwilling to declare a project of regional impact to communicate in some fashion, maybe. By having the town attorney send a letter to the select board saying, now look, understand. If you go this route and don't declare this project of regional impact, which we think it is, these are the potential consequences. Um, I, you know, but I think the, the remedy uh, could be ultimately the, the um. The, the community that didn't get the notice of regional impact that could say that they were likely affected by this project. They could then claim to have the status of an abutter and appeal Superior Court. Um, so I think that in most instances should persuade the reluctant community to reconsider. Because, you know, allowing a, a, a community to be a, 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 an affected community under the D R I statute. You know, they just are given status and they don't have any special status other than being deemed to be a butters and they can participate. So I don't see that as having a significant um, diminishing impact on the planning board or town having jurisdiction. Um, and I think that it's better to work cooperatively with your neighbors rather than not.
Thank you.
So a couple of things to keep in mind when you make a decision. You now are required to have written findings of fact to support the decision. That absolutely necessary and more important. Failure of the board to make specific written findings of fact supporting a disapproval. Could be grounds, shall be grounds for automatic reversal and remand by the Superior Court. So I, I don't, you know, I'm on a Z B A, we make written findings of fact all the time. It, you know, this is, doesn't have to be a really overtly complex process. You just have to be able to enunciate something from the hearing record or the submittals, why this project wasn't appropriate. Uh, you know, that, you know, the, the, the proposed driveway intersection between the proposed subdivision road. And a nearby public road intersection was going to create traffic problems that the. The developer was unwilling to ameliorate and we felt it was more important to protect health, safety, welfare of people in the nearby. Traffic in- intersection rather than approve the developer's request that the uh, intersecting new public subdivision road be located too close. Um, those are the kind of things you have to extract from the hearing record. Uh, and you have to be able to use those and it could be a zoning requirement, it could be. A subdivision requirement or site plan requirement and, and articulating what was the finding of fact that justified denying the project. As I already said, you've got a timeline extension that was granted to, uh, to planning boards. If you make a D R I declarative for development of regional impact uh, change. But the uh, that was adopted uh, H B three, three, two in twenty twenty one. And H B sixteen sixty one, which changed a lot of these timetables, uh, did not remove the additional thirty days. Um, that was a, a given to towns in twenty twenty one. So uh, you still have this ability. And I think it should be an incentive, you know, err on the side of caution, declare a project of regional impact. Because you're going to get more time to consider an application. It almost seems like a no brainer to me. Just emphasize you have sixty five days from plan acceptance to approve or disapprove an application. You really don't have any choice. Um, and um, you know. Uh, you, the only other option you might have if the planning board determines that after sixty five days and the developer is not willing to give you an extension. By the way, if you need an extension, get it in writing, signed by the person to be charged as the representative of the applicant. So when someone submits an application, whether it's the owner of the property or someone who's there uh, as the agent. You make sure you've got a document on file that says this X Y Z surveying and engineering fund company is the agent for the owner of the property. And can uh, execute documents such as extensions. Get it in writing. Um, if you can't get the extension, the planning board can nonetheless um, uh, deny the application without prejudice. Which will allow the application to reapply, the applicant to reapply.
I, I got a question here, Steve, that was an interesting question. If an extension is agreed to by an applicant beyond a sixty day period, is it in an email? Is that binding? In, in this case, the meeting was canceled uh, due to weather. Which the applicant agreed to in an email. But then the applicant filed the decision, that a decision was not made within the sixty five day timeframe.
That might work in terms of being able to demonstrate that there was a, a, they, an actual extension um, permission that was provided. You know, so it, it sounds like the applicant is pulling a fast one. Um, you know, uh, you know, whether or not. I mean, you've had the situation where exigent circumstances, the weather prevented the board from meeting on the date and time in question where they would have made a decision. And the applicant, as I understand it, consented to canceling the meeting because of the weather. That might be a sufficient de facto consent to an extension. So that if, if the appeal to the Superior Court. Well, what's supposed to happen under the statute is if you don't make a decision within the sixty five days, the select board has to make, has to approve the plan. You know, you might have to have the town attorney intervene and say, no, this is what actually happened. The select board can't approve it. And this was a, in, in effect, a, uh, an extension that was granted by the applicant. Whether that email would, would, would prove that to be true, I, I don't know. It may depend on what was in the language of the email. But I'd fight that one. I think that sounds like the applicant in effect granted an extension. And by the way, the ninety day extension used to be you could ask for a ninety day extension from the select board that also um, has flown the coop too.
There's another question that I also had. How does it affect things if you deny an application without prejudice? But the law says you must provide a reason for the denial.
Um, well, okay, I think the better view would be the statute that says. You either approve with findings of fact, approving, you know, stating reasons why yes or no. That's to be seen separate from this other form of decision. Which you're saying, we can't make a decision, we don't have enough information. Um, so it's inconsistent, then say you need to explain why, what's the finding the fact that supported your reason to not make a decision? I don't think that adds up. I think that it's better way to look at those two parts of the statute in the disjunctive. So first of all, you make a decision based upon a finding of fact, approve or disapprove. If you can't make a decision because you don't have enough facts, that's what the statute says. Enough information to make a judgment, you just deny without prejudice. I don't think there is a need to explain in a finding of fact why you're denying without prejudice. Because I think that's not intended to require a finding of fact. So public hearing procedures, you are required to hear from the applicant, butters and others with direct interest and others as may be permitted by the board. I would just say, you know, you have some, a reasonable ability. I would just say, you know, you have some, a reasonable ability as a planning board for those who are not abutters and cannot show they are directly affected to, to make a judgment how much time and energy you're going to allow those citizens, it could be citizens from your town, it could be a citizen from an adjacent town who aren't really directly affected. I think we see this more often in cell tower cases. How much time and energy you have to expend or allow them to expend in terms of speaking to your planning board. But you certainly have to hear from the abutters, uh, the applicant and those with their direct interest and who are affected. And the board still has the ability to set some reasonable limits in terms of how much time people are allowed to speak. You know, through your public meeting and rules of procedure. Follow those rules of procedure, have them in place. Planning boards, all land use boards have to have rules of procedure. That's an RSA six seventy-six column one. You gotta have them. And those rules of procedure should cover public meeting procedures and public comment and public hearing presentations and time limits and things along those lines. And again, uh, site visits are public meetings. So the, if you have a site visit of the board, that's still a public meeting. You have to keep minutes. And that has to be tracked as part of the process of reaching of ultimately a decision on the application. And Riggins rules are an invaluable tool, a thumbnail, uh, pieces of valuable advice on how to be an effective member of a land use board. When you're deliberating, weighing the evidence, a couple of things I think you need to keep in mind, get all the information you need before you call, close the public hearing. The board can deliberate and vote at a later meeting if you have time within the timetable. Avoid ex parte contacts with uh members of the public or the applicant or other registered parties if you're going to close the public hearing and come back another day to make a decision. You can rely on personal knowledge of the area. You're not bound to accept the conclusions of experts, but if you're going to use your personal knowledge or other information to reject in the opinion of an expert, uh, it has to be based upon other competing evidence. Typically, if there's uncontradicted expert testimony of particular issue as to whether or not something is a prime wetland or whether or not a particular uh roadway interconnect is necessary. It's going to be difficult to deny the application if you're going to ignore all that expert evidence unless you have an adequately explained decision why you have a, a competing conclusion based upon evidence. And there's a case involving a town that made a decision along those lines from a Z B A when the Z B A rejected the opinion of a traffic engineer. But that Z B A has specific evidence that supported their own conclusions that the traffic engineer's assessments were inaccurate. Among other reasons, the traffic engineer had done their traffic study at a time of very low traffic, not during the vacation period in the, in the summer months when there was more concern about this particular use, which was an expansion of a, of a campground on one of the town's lakes. So uh you have to have, you know, an adequate foundational knowledge to conclude that an applicant's judgments that, that a, a, an expert's judgments are not well-founded.
Hey, Steve, can I jump in just for a quick second here? There's a question in the chat that um I've answered and we're just looking for some double clarification. So the question is, are minutes of the meeting sufficient when an applicant agrees to an extension during a public hearing? Or should it be in writing? And uh my opinion was that minutes of the meeting are not sufficient for an agreement on an extension and an agreement should be in writing. So just looking for, for your input and your legally correct answer. Thank you.
Well, uh, the minutes could be sufficient if that's all you have and that's what you have to rely on. But I think the better practice is to have a standard form that the staff would able to whip out of a folder and say, oh, you're granting us an extension? Great. Let's fill this out and have you sign it. And put it in the record. That is always the better practice. Or the email that the person sent in, you know, the, the applicant engineer sends an email saying, I can't make it tonight. I'm, I'm in Florida in the snowstorm preventing me from getting there. And I have the applicant's authority to grant an extension for thirty days. That's, that's going to be sufficient too, but you know, uh, the minutes that might carry the day. I, I'm not going to say it's, it's not like, it, it wouldn't be sufficient. I just think the better practice is to get it in writing from the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you.
So the, the Dartmouth versus Hanover case is an important kind of bellwether and trying to understand better about which planning boards have, you know, limitations on their ability to say no when an applicant can demonstrate they've complied with all the rules and regulations. And there's nothing about the application that doesn't meet your zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations or other reasonable requirements the planning board may have. And this case involved whether or not a particular significant new athletic building structure was going to have an inordinate impact on an adjacent residential area. And one of the issues, whether or not the size and, and dimensions of the building uh were such that it was going to cast a a shadow on the nearby homes and prevent them from getting sunlight during some parts of the winter months. But I think the key thing to keep in mind is that ultimately, after looking at all the rules and, and decision-making that were made and the conclusions by um the other uh staff people in the, in the community, the town of Hanover, uh, the building inspector was satisfied, the planner was satisfied, the rules and regulations, subdivision and site plan were satisfied. Ultimately, the Supreme Court concluded that the, the planning board simply had made a personal unsupported opinion as to why this athletic structure should not be approved. So um if you're going to say no, it's going to have to be more than your own personal opinion. It has to be founded on some aspect of your rules and regulation as to why the project does not comply. You have to make a written notice of decision. And I've already indicated you have to give written reasons. You approve or disapprove with conditions as the case may be, or disapprove. You, as indicated, you have to have findings of fact. You have to have the decision and meeting minutes on file within five business days of your meeting where you made the decision. And a tie vote is not a decision. And you can't make a decision and say refer to the minutes of the planning board as the reasons why. That doesn't cut it. You have to have a written decision and you have to spell it out. What's the reason why the plan is disapproved or approved? What are the conditions that attach? Representations by an applicant as part of an approval, that doesn't cut it. If someone has said, I'm going to put in a, 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 a small recreation area in this project and that's in the minutes. Put it as a condition of approval. Don't rely on the minutes. The minute, the condition should relate to ensuring compliance with your relevant regulations. Many towns have standard conditions which are in, uh, imported into any uh planning board decision approving a subdivision or site plan. A condition precedent is where you've said, we will give final approval to this project so, so long as you have, you fix this particular issue on the site plan, maybe move a driveway or, or make some other alteration to landscaping as the approval if it's site plan. And that's a condition of sub, uh, precedent. We're not going to sign the plan until you satisfy this condition. The condition subsequent is, you know, this particular project, let's say it's a um fast food uh, uh restaurant. You're not going to have garbage pickup from the dumpsters anytime after eleven o'clock at night and early to seven o'clock in the morning. So we're to have loud noises perhaps disturbing an adjacent residential area. That's a condition subsequent that's binding uh in the future. You could have a condition that might require a compliance hearing. So if you, you make a project subject to final engineering review, where the town engineer has to review changes made by the applicant. You're going to have to have another hearing before the planning board to show, yep, I got the engineering review and now we're satisfied because you can't just say the engineer signed off on everything. And that's something the chair can sign the plan, the, the planning board has to bring it back for a compliance hearing to demonstrate that the town engineer, through their submission and the ability to discuss it at a public meeting for the public hearing, satisfies that particular requirement. Running short of time and I'm going to try to wrap up soon. Yes.
We had a number of questions, related questions, pretty, pretty good questions that I, that I meant to ask you before you got off statutory deadlines. But if you wouldn't mind, I, I, I think there's probably been enough of them that asked in a slightly different way. But the concern is, the question in a nutshell is, when is an application determined? When does the timeline start? So the first question is, you know, is a, is a, an application considered formal? Until when it's, until it's substantially complete enough for the planning board to accept it. So in other words, you know, the planning board has to accept it for the timeframe to start. Uh, and then subsequently, someone has said, you know, we've had application changes submitted less than twenty-one days before a hearing. How does this affect, like, you know, for instance, you may have accepted it as complete, but, and then at a subsequent hearing changes are made. How does this affect the sixty-five day limitation? So those are some, there are additional questions, but I guess we'll just start with those.
Okay, so um I guess I would say in terms of application completeness, someone has to have uh, and this may be a staff function or maybe you do this conceptual consultation review. The planning board goes over the submission, the application materials and goes over the checklist and decides it's, it's ready for plan acceptance. And then you schedule a plan acceptance meeting. If you've had a plan acceptance for an application, I don't just because they've modified the application after plan acceptance, that doesn't start a clock again. That's not how it works. That's the nature of the give and take in subdivision and site plan approval. Someone comes in, they've got the application complete, you're going to have a give and take with the applicant and they're going to modify it. You don't tell the person, oh, you've modified the location of that driveway. Oh, we have to new, have the new plan acceptance. We get another sixty-five days. That's not how it works. It's a give and take process. There are going to be changes to the application responding to concerns from abutters and the, and the planning board throughout the process. And that's okay, but that doesn't trigger another application acceptance and another sixty-five days. That's just not how it works.
So is it the case that you, any, any, uh, you'd have to wait until it's determined complete or accepted by the board for review at that point, regardless of how many, what changes are made after it's the clock starts? Or could you potentially not accept it because it's missing too much information, in which case the clock hasn't started?
Well, I agree. I, i- if the board decides it's not a completed application, it's not a complete application, the clock doesn't start. So, you know, but, you know, ideally, you haven't scheduled the meeting and potential public hearing for plan acceptance until somebody has made an initial determination, it's ready to go. When I was on the planning board, we had a staff who would review it. And he would tell the applicant, I think you're ready. I'm going to schedule this for a, a plan acceptance and public hearing. And then the staff would come to the planning board meeting and say, I've reviewed the application, the checklist is, is satisfied. There are a few things that may need to be tweaked, but I'm satisfied, it's satisfied. And we'd make a motion to accept it. You know, so I, I think if there's a serious debate between staff or the conceptual consultation that somehow the application is not reasonably complete, uh, and therefore we're not going to accept it as a completed application, okay, that can happen. But it should be really after someone has made that initial determination. Whether the planning board is making the initial determination of app, application satisfaction, satisfaction of the checklist at conceptual consultation, uh, or the staff has done that for you. Uh, and if the staff has, has teed up the application for plan acceptance and public hearing. You know, you rely on your staff, so you should generally accept that their judgment is correct, that it's ready for plan acceptance. I, I think it should be the rare case generally, that a board should reject a plan as not being complete, my personal opinion.
Thank you.
So grandfather rights, a couple of things you should understand about grandfather rights. The planning board can define what's considered substantial completion of improvements and active and substantial development which triggers certain vesting rights under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. So keep that concept in mind in terms of your decision-making and or your rules or regulations. I'm running a little short of time. I just want to mention some notable cases. These are recent decisions. I think the most important of these is Sheets versus County of El Dorado. Impact fees have to have an essential nexus to legitimate government interests and have a rush, rough proportionality to a development's impact. Denial of site plan approval cannot be based solely on the purpose provisions of the planning board's regulations. The city of Franklin Planning Board denied a site plan for a solar farm based upon the purpose provisions of the site plan regulations and the Supreme Court said, that's not good enough. Failure to finally, timely file us, I, I, Housing Appeals Board appeal does not preclude proceeding with a timely appeal for the Z B A. This is kind of the timing procedures between Z B A decision-making and Housing Appeals Board decision. Subdivision approvals, and this is the Harvey versus Barrington case, are subject to six seventy-four forty-one. Planning board cannot approve a subdivision of land on, on a private or class six road unless there's been approval for that eventual building permit to be issued for that project by the select board under six seventy-four forty-one. And there was a decision recently where the Supreme Court reversed a Housing Appeals Board decision because the Housing Appeals Board had wrongly substituted its judgment for a decision of the planning board. So Housing Appeals Board uh is the new mechanism that's available for those who are aggrieved by decisions uh of the local land use board involving housing. And you can appeal either to the Housing Appeals Board for those kind of cases, or you can appeal Superior Court. And the, the Superior Court has a brand-new land use review docket. And there's a land use, uh, a dedicated Superior Court judge who was assigned to handle all land use cases. In fact, when that judge uh was sworn in, he was transferred seventy cases from all the Superior Courts in the state of New Hampshire. So all pending land use cases that had not had a hearing or decision automatically went to the land use review docket and that docket is held at the Hillsborough County Superior Court North. And in the future, all applications for appeal of a land use decision involving the zoning board of adjustment or planning board, and I think it's also historic district ordinance. Those will automatically be transferred to the uh land use review docket in Hillsborough County Superior Court North. And there's more details here in terms of the administrative order governing the land use review docket available here on the U R L, the courts, uh, in the Superior Court administrative rules. And with that, I would thank you for um having me attend the O P D conference. I recommend, I just would point out that one of the jobs that I have here at N H M A is to answer your inquiries. So all of the cities and towns are members of N H M A, so you contact us at legal inquiries or our contacts through our website or by telephone. And I'm sorry, I didn't leave a lot of time for answers of questions, but I answered some so far. And I don't know of any others for the minute left that I could continue to follow up and answer, either Stephanie or Heather.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Steve. Uh, we do technically have fifteen more minutes before the next session, which is at ten thirty. So for those who may want to ask questions, we also do have the session at the end of the day. The uh, the planner, the planner is in where we can follow up on some of these questions as well. I will keep track of some of these that were not answered. But um, here's a good one. Can a planning board require conditions that are not supported by existing ordinances?
Well, I mean, I, I guess, um, you know, existing ordinances. So I, I think the Franklin case that, that really wasn't a situation where a condition was imposed. That was a denial. I, I think there's, there's case law generally that says if you're going to oppose a condition, that condition has to be derivative of a requirement or a standard which comes from your rules and regulations, subdivision or site plan or zoning or state law. You know, you can't out of thin air make up a requirement that doesn't seem to be consistent with the, the laws that would govern this type of use of land or the ways in which the type of use of land would have an impact on, on the abutters or a neighboring community. So um, you know, uh, there is a case that talks, talks about this, that that conditions have to be reasonably related to the applicable rules, the rules that govern this particular land use. And it can't be something out of left field which doesn't have some, isn't tethered to some other uh regulation that would apply in that particular context.
Yeah, I, I can come up with some good examples, uh, for instance, in Concord, when there was, uh, there may be a business and a condition placed on a business might be that it can't be opened past a certain time or that deliveries would have to occur at certain times. And all of those were related to, uh, you know, the abutters in the neighborhood. And so those, there obviously isn't in our ordinance any requirement for certain times for deliveries or business hours. But due to the nature of the business, uh, hours may have been put, the condition for the hours may have been placed on, on the on the project. But we wouldn't, for instance, place a condition that, um, you know, the, the building be pink or something like that. That's not really related to uh public safety, health or welfare or the character of the community or the quality of life or any of those things.
Agreed.
So we do have, let's see. So we do have, let's see, there was a question. Um, I think this was a little bit answered, but is there something, if, if the applicant agrees to a self-imposed condition, but it doesn't make it into the notice of decision, can the applicant be held to those? In my opinion, would be no. If it's not in the notice of decision, then it doesn't have legal authority. But what's your, what's your take on that?
If you have a, a representation by the applicant, they're going to do something with this particular project, or they're going to provide some additional attribute or facility, get it in writing. The minutes may not be sufficient. Now, it might satisfy if, you know, we had a, let's say you had a code enforcement case, and you told us at the planning board hearing, you were going to put in this little tot lot, this little miniature recreation area for children, and you didn't do it, you know, is that going to be impossible to enforce? It may depend upon the judge you appear in front of, but it's just not a good practice. Put it in writing. If it's a requirement, if they've made a representation, keep notes and make sure it's in a condition of approval in the notice of decision and/or note on the plan.
Another question is, if the notice of decision is not posted within five days, is it grounds for reversal of the planning board decision?
Generally, no, but what might, might do, it might enlarge in the, enlarge the time the person has to appeal the decision. There's, so there's a case law that talks about if you don't file the notice of decision within the prescribed statutory time period, it may enlarge their ability to appeal under RSA six seventy-seven colon fifteen. I don't think it would result in a reversal, but it would, you know, potentially enlarge the challenge period for the decision you made.
Gotcha. Can the planning board or zoning board definitively tell an applicant they must get a special exception or variance?
Well, I think the better way to put it is, the planning board can never approve a plan that does not conform with the zoning ordinance. I mean, that, you're prohibited from approving anything that doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance. So, you know, the zoning ordinance in my town is about quarter to fifty pages long. So there's certainly a possibility someone could miss a few things here and there. And if there's a sharp-eyed planning board member who says, wait a minute, you know, you, you're putting this driveway too close to the nearest intersecting town road, you know, we can't approve this. I think it's, it's appropriate for the planning board to point that out and to tell the applicant, until you get that addressed in terms of getting zoning relief, you know, we can't approve this project. That, that seems completely consistent with the planning board's obligation.
It's a good one. Can you hold off accepting the, the plan, the application for consideration to stop the clock while the applicant continues to meet with other boards or committees, i.e. conservation or technical review committee? Is there a time in which the plan should be formally accepted as complete during that process?
Well, that's a very interesting question, because what six seventy-six colon four says, that an application cannot be deemed incomplete simply because the applicant does not have permits or approvals from state or federal agencies. The language of that sentence does not refer to a town saying separately, we're not considered, consider this application complete until you've gotten your special exception or other permission from the zoning board of adjustment. Theoretically, you can do that. I'm of the opinion you should allow an application to, to proceed in parallel so that they can submit an application, have the application begin the approval process or approval process by the planning board, but also allow them in a parallel process appear before the ZBA to get zoning relief. I, I think I do that because it's expensive to do these projects, and time is money for a project, especially an affordable housing project. And the more you create delays by now allowing someone to have a parallel path to get approval, they can go to the ZBA and the planning board at the same time, understanding they can't plan anymore, can't approve it until the ZBA has signed off on this particular change. You, you're, you're making it more expensive and making it more difficult for the project to get approved. And I think especially for housing, you have to be considerate of that limitation. But again, technically, under the statute, you can't deem an application incomplete simply because they don't have certain state and other federal permits. That's the language. It doesn't refer to permission from the zoning board of adjustment.
Great. Thank you. We do have a few more questions that, and I'm going to save for the roundtable, if you get a chance to answer them at the end. I do want to give people a few minutes to stretch and get a drink before the next session, which is at ten-thirty. So we're going to just take it with no longer fifteen minutes. It's going to be about an eight-minute break, and then Ben Frost will be joining us to talk about planning board roles and responsibilities. So you may have a chance to ask your questions during that session as well. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you shortly.